All right, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, 6:32 PM. And you are at Wausau City Hall for a Common Council of the City of Wausau meeting. Welcome, everybody. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, next up, the clerk will call the roll.
Ten voting members present.
All right, thank you.
Next up, proclamations. I don't have any, but we will continue to update the website as it continues. Also, for anyone who is here, I, without any objection, I plan on pulling item number 221109A. Nope, just kidding, it's not that one. I'm sorry to give you a heart attack back there. Oh my goodness. It's 230815. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Foundry on Third, Phase One LLC. And we are setting up a special meeting for next week to discuss that. All righty, we will go ahead and move on to public comment. The only person I have here is Chuck Gudorzy.
Well, good evening, everybody. And that's by default because Nick Patterson is trying to make his way here. But anyway, let me update you a little bit from Wausau's perspective. I want to thank the Economic Development Committee for hearing the updates last week. You know, relative to the project itself, I think I've always said that we're laser-focused in 2023 on three projects and four projects, actually, with the Home Front. And all of those projects are really moving along very nicely. We're pleased with the streets and the progress on the streets, Children's Imaginarium, the Front of Home, and Foundry on Third. Now, relative to that, I'll just kind of speak for Nick a little bit as to what he said and how we feel about the project. And that is that it's moving along very quickly. They are moving a lot of moving balls relative to permits, relative to getting the plans done, relative to the architectural reviews that are occurring. There's a little bit of headwind, as we all know, in the economic climate. But even in that regard, relative to the raising of equity and banking relationships, those are moving along very quickly. We're encouraged, as the Wausau Board, obviously, to continue this project moving. It needs a little bit more time in terms of putting those pieces together, but we are very encouraged that we're going to get it done, and we're going to start just as soon as we can. So thank you for your support as we continue to dialogue and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have Nick Patterson as wishing to speak. You are welcome to, since I have your sheet from you, if you're ready to do so right now, as you walk in.
Hi, Nick Patterson with Two Well Enterprises. I'll try to keep this as short as possible. So as I understand, Foundry on Third has been pulled from the agenda tonight, and I request that that be placed back on the agenda for a vote tonight. As you recall, a couple months ago, we, Wausau and myself, provided an update to council and project update, mall redevelopment and on the Foundry on Third. And in that update, I indicated that we would need an extension of our development agreement. So, and I'll continue to provide updates to the council as I have them, but continue to make great progress on the development. Our plans are done. They're done, and they're into the city. They're into ePlan Review. EPlan Review came back with a number of comments. We have addressed about 90% of those comments. And actually, in our daily project meeting today, our architect indicated that we've addressed the final comment, and that update will be sent into the city by next week. So this close to the finish line, and I would hate for this to be pulled out from city staff and ePlan Review when we're this close to getting our final approvals on the development. So again, I request this be placed back on the agenda for a vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We are moving on. File number 230701 through file number 230108, this is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Alder Larson and a second by Alder Lukens. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing anyone.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 230803. This is Mayor's Appointments. We have two new appointments to the Citizens Advisory Committee, Community Development Block Grant Committee, that is Alora Koval and Avia Lynch. Also, on the Wausau Arts Commission, we are appointing Alora Koval as well. Affordable Housing Task Force, we are reappointing Ben Lee, Kristin Slonsky, and Tom Holster, excuse me. And that is it. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Lukens. Any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All righty, thank you. We are now to file number 230808. This is a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the over-hire of one police officer within the Police Department. I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Harpst. Is there any discussion here? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All right, thank you. Moving on to file number 221109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2023 budget modification for the Seal Coat Project. I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder McElhany. Is there any discussion? I am not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 180911. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the termination of lease agreement with Marathon County UW Extension at 700 Grand Avenue. It looks like I have a motion from Alder Rasmussen and a second from Alder Watson. Alder Denny.
Mayor, I had a point of order on the prior item, if I could.
All right. What is your point of order?
It was properly noticed on the agenda, and appears we have people who traveled here to conduct that business. I would recommend that we consider it. And at very minimum, you know, provide some explanation to residents. You know, if there's questions that staff and council here cannot answer, we can determine whether or not we delay that to a future date. But we should honor the fact that, I mean, it's been 60 days since we first got the notice from Mr. Ekman. So here we are.
All right, so I'm going to take into consideration your point of order. What do you think as parliamentarian? What is your advice?
Is he objecting to your removal of it from the agenda?
I would ask the Alder.
Yes, and then having heard the parties involved.
Okay, so if there's no consensus, because we don't approve our agendas at the beginning of each business meeting, and because there's an objection, and you don't have full consensus to remove it from the agenda, you can call that file number and see if anybody makes any other motions.
Does there need to be a second to the point of order or request for this?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so.
I have a point of order, because we are in the middle of a vote. We have a motion on the floor with a second. I think Alder Denny is out of order right now before.
For the different file, 180911, we should take care of that one, and then you may go back to the previous file, Mayor.
All right, for the time being, right now, we are on file number 180911. That is a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the termination of lease agreement with Marathon County UW Extension at 700 Grand Avenue. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? I don't see any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All right, thank you. Moving on to file number 221109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2023 budget modification for the Seal Coat Project. I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder McElhany. Is there any discussion? I am not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 180911. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the termination of lease agreement with Marathon County UW Extension at 700 Grand Avenue. It looks like I have a motion from Alder Rasmussen and a second from Alder Watson. Alder Denny.
Mayor, I had a point of order on the prior item, if I could.
All right. What is your point of order?
It was properly noticed on the agenda, and appears we have people who traveled here to conduct that business. I would recommend that we consider it. And at very minimum, you know, provide some explanation to residents. You know, if there's questions that staff and council here cannot answer, we can determine whether or not we delay that to a future date. But we should honor the fact that, I mean, it's been 60 days since we first got the notice from Mr. Ekman. So here we are.
All right, so I'm going to take into consideration your point of order. What do you think as parliamentarian? What is your advice?
Is he objecting to your removal of it from the agenda?
I would ask the Alder.
Yes, and then having heard the parties involved.
Okay, so if there's no consensus, because we don't approve our agendas at the beginning of each business meeting, and because there's an objection, and you don't have full consensus to remove it from the agenda, you can call that file number and see if anybody makes any other motions.
Does there need to be a second to the point of order or request for this?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so.
I have a point of order, because we are in the middle of a vote. We have a motion on the floor with a second. I think Alder Denny is out of order right now before.
For the different file, 180911, we should take care of that one, and then you may go back to the previous file, Mayor.
All right, for the time being, right now, we are on file number 180911. That is a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the termination of lease agreement with Marathon County UW Extension at 700 Grand Avenue. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? I don't see any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All right, so what we're going to do here is I will call the item number. I will ask for a motion in a second. I'm going to give the clerk, our new deputy clerk, Cody, an opportunity to type it in, in case you haven't met him yet. He's doing great. All right, so this is item number 230815. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Foundry on Third, Phase One LLC. I have a motion by Alder Killian, presumably to move forward. And I have a second by Alder Denny. All right, Alder Gisselman.
Well, I'm speaking to the issue with regard to the pulling of an item. It's been my tradition through the years that even an Alder person and/or the mayor could pull an item from the agenda, and that was, you know, through all my years, never challenged. And if we have that, or if we are establishing that tradition tonight, I think there should be some way to navigate the consensus, not the rule of the body with regard to how we want to proceed with either affirming the rule of the mayor or moving forward. But I think we should establish some type, I think we're establishing a rule tonight, and I question that. I think it should be a little, shouldn't be at the drop of a hat, but I think it should be more established. That's why I think that there should be some kind of action on part of the body. And I don't know what that, and I'm not getting into the debate with regard to the motion in front of us. I'm just questioning the propriety of how we've acted in the past, and if we're deviating from that, I think we should be careful and maybe even get to the point of having the body vote on that, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay, I appreciate your comments. I'm going to let our city attorney speak, and I do wonder if what we're debating here, there's an important nuance.
Well, yeah, I'll give you the background, and you folks can decide how you want to handle it. So your rules that you adopt as a council on how you're going to conduct your business are in Chapter 2.16 of the ordinances. And your rules do not speak to agenda setting or adoption. The state statutes do, though, however. And Rule 19 of 2.16 says that in the absence of a standing rule, the council will be governed by the most current edition of Robert's Rules, newly revised, which is the 12th edition. According to Robert's Rules, under 41:62, generally, those bodies will approve the agendas before the beginning of each meeting. We are not in the practice of doing that. They're put together, the mayor signs the agenda, but no one of you, including the mayor, has any independent authority to set or control the subject matter of an agenda. The president of an organization, or the chairperson of a committee, or the mayor for the council, controls the administration of the agendas. They read the file numbers, and we walk through the items of business. But our practice, and Gary's probably seen this, our pattern and practice has been, and we've pulled things from the agenda before, if things haven't been ready, or there's further questions, there's been all kinds of reasons. The mayor usually says, is there any objection? You know, she can say, I've been requested by so-and-so to pull this from the agenda. Is there any objection? And if there isn't any, by consensus, then, we move forward, and she doesn't call the file number. That's the way we've always operated. Tonight, she wanted to do that before the public comment, so that if anybody wanted to save their comments in case it were removed from the agenda, they could do so, or they could decide to speak tonight. So looking at the league things, obviously, like I said, you can't, one person can't usurp that legislative authority. Everybody has to decide on it, so there's several things you could do. You could now move to vote to remove it from the agenda, or you could move to postpone it to a time certain or a special meeting of the council. You could just first or second it and discuss it, but at any time, anybody else can make any other motions they want to make, or amendments, or whatever. Having had Mr. Denny, what I interpreted, objecting to its removal from the agenda, then we had the mayor read the file number, and now you've taken a first and a second to discuss it.
And we got to line up a folks who've requested to speak.
Right, so I don't know if I've addressed your questions, Gary, but it is by majority of the body whether it stays on the agenda this evening or gets removed, but it'll either be by a motion to postpone or a motion to remove it from the agenda.
And also, I guess, maybe to give a little clarity, I heard from a couple of council members who requested more time. They requested closed session. They requested outside counsel. We could not arrange that, obviously, in the afternoon hours today, and so that's why I made that decision.
Can I speak?
Absolutely. Follow up.
Well, we received note late this afternoon, so thus, we are not prepared, I'm not prepared for the debate. It's been reported in the media. The public has not been aware that the debate is going to happen with regard to this motion in front of us. So I, right now, I'm not sure what, because I think, what are we telling the, the media has already spoken out that this item was going to be pulled from the agenda, and I think, and as well as the city council. So I'm not prepared to speak to that, to the issue, the motion in front of us. So I guess I need to hear from other, you know, is this what we want to show the public with regard to how we do business? I question that.
So I have a whole line of people, if you feel like hitting your button, feel free, but I'm going to move on in order. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I have to agree with Alder Gisselman to an extent that, in the past, when an item wasn't ready, or an item needed additional consideration, or, you know, council members were asking for more time, either to inform themselves or network with people, we've allowed the mayor the latitude to remove those items, and we've really not often had a protracted fight about that, because often, holding something to a future meeting usually yields a better result, and it usually yields better communication. So, you know, I don't feel like acting on this tonight is a prudent decision. We received a communication from the mayor this afternoon, saying that a couple of our members had asked for additional time. They had asked for closed session to ask questions of our outside legal counsel, who writes our development agreements. Why would we deny ourselves that opportunity to have that extra information? And, you know, knowing that we're voting on an extension, the delay that our not acting tonight creates isn't weeks and months. We were, they were already seeking quorum tonight for Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week, which is a special session of the council. So we could devote our full attention to the item that night, get the answers to the questions that we want, and then immediately thereafter, come back to open session and take action however we choose. So we're not creating a lengthy delay, but I really think that for us to blaze forward, and for those who've asked for more time and asked for some legal advice in closed session, we're really not doing a service to those folks. I feel like we need to hold off tonight, you know, and I'm sorry to the developer, but I really think that we will end up with a better result and an outcome that we all feel better about in terms of information exchange if we wait. So I am not prepared to act on this tonight either. In fact, I'd offer a motion to table it to a future date.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to table this. I'm going to take a little bit of editorial leeway and say we're going to table until our special meeting, anticipated for next week.
That's fine by me.
Okay, so I'm going to put everyone in the queue right now. Hopefully, I might just, no.
Madam Chair, can I second that motion?
You can, okay, so we have a motion and a second now.
So discuss. Motion. Click the M and then.
Yeah, so, yeah, once we get this, once we have this up, we have a motion to table to our special meeting, and a second, if you'd like to speak, please push your button again. I saw, okay. Alder Lukens and then Alder McElhany, thank you.
I'll make mine really quick. I just wanted to thank Alder Gisselman for the history on that, and I would agree that I'm not prepared either, and I would like to respect the wishes of the other Alders that requested a closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Alder McElhany.
I was one of the Alders that called the mayor today and requested. I had talked to Director Brodick yesterday. I talked to our city attorney today, and I talked to the mayor today. And I was going to make the motion to table, and then she heard from others and said that she was going to pull it. Because let me be clear, I will vote no to this if I don't get the information I need through closed session. And that is, that is, you know, I need to have, make an educated vote. I don't care who needs to say, you know, that I demand a vote tonight. I am here to represent my district. I've heard very vociferous things against this project, and they're asking questions that I don't have answers for, and I cannot make a big decision without that knowledge. So I appreciate people that are saying yes, let's just get the information, talk about this in closed session. I think I totally agree with Alder Rasmussen that we will get to a better product that way. You know, once questions are answered, things seem to clear up. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think from what we heard from public comment tonight, it sounds like things are moving so swiftly and greatly. It doesn't sound like an extension's even needed anymore, so perhaps we could take a vote on that. That's, I think, what we heard from Mr. Gudorzy and Mr. Patterson, that everything is moving along smoothly and swiftly. So I'm quite confused, if that's the case, why we would need to delay completion of a project until essentially 2026, I mean, November 2025, very similar timeframe. And hey, I'd be willing to respect and defer to my colleagues' wishes on having another delay, but I'm a little concerned that we're talking about a project that the city has committed $10.8 million of taxpayer money to over 21 years, and, you know, just hours before the meeting, we apparently, as a body, do not cohesively have the knowledge we need to even take appropriate action with an item that's been agendized. So as you know, Madam Chair, you know, I have concerns about putting things on the agenda with too little time, and I also have similar concerns about taking them off the agenda in too little time. If we do this tonight, I will expect that invariably, every time a member then contacts your office with the request for more time to consult with outside parties or get more information, then invariably, what happens tonight will also occur on any other item, not just the kind of mess that this development situation has turned into. So yes, I guess I will not stand as an obstacle to my colleagues delaying this or getting more information, but I would expect that with uniform consistency, that's what happens with any other item, if someone emails your office to ask for more time, not just tonight. But again, I'd underscore that both Mr. Gudorzy and Mr. Patterson came here tonight and said everything's moving along smoothly and swiftly, so maybe we don't need an extension at all, and we can just move ahead as our parties and partners committed to contractually and get this going before September 1st, before this devolves into further expensive mess. Thank you.
Alder Denny.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I guess I would echo that, but it really isn't about history of what our casual practices have been. It's about the open meetings laws, and they were, it was on the agenda, it was noticed. A lot of people, the last meeting that we had with the proposal that they made, there were 248 viewers. So there could be hundreds of viewers out there watching in expectation for this. And obviously, the representative, I don't know if he came up from Madison or where, but he didn't get the memo. At very minimum, I think we owe the citizens an update on what's going on here, so that they know where they're not walking past, you know, a toxic waste site or something. It's been 60 days. The last, at the presentation, we were not allowed to discuss, so we really haven't had hearty discussion on this up until this point. And I would agree with the process that Alder McElhany mentions. We do have a problem with process. It should be consistent, it should be fair, and it should be transparent. And it certainly hasn't been consistent, because we would have given guidance to the ED staff to negotiate this in accordance with what our expectations were. And I tried to set those out at the presentation, but we didn't get that into the record, as far as I could recall. So I think we need to keep this moving for the benefit of the city. So, I, I think we need to keep this moving, for the, for the benefit of the city, the benefit of the small businesses, that were up at the podium, belling up here, asking for us to do this. So, at a minimum, we need, we need to give them an explanation. Thank you.
Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you ready to mark this on the calendar? I agree with Alder Rasmussen.
Eight is an auspicious number.
But, but, that being said, you know, ever since this came up, on the, that it was canceled off the agenda tonight, so I left my material at home, I'm not prepared. As you know, I'm not a supporter for this project, and as everybody knows, and I, and I would like to know what our, our, what our legal obligations are, and what they aren't, and should we, should we, should we choose to not, should we choose to let this agreement default, or should we move forward? I think this is all questions that we all need answered, and, obviously, it needs to be talked about, and as Alder, as Alder said, you know, we, we need to come out with a better product, so we all have a better understanding of what's going on here, because, in my humble opinion, there has been too much not, non-transparency on this, there's just been too much stuff that goes on behind closed doors, and we need to be educated before we move forward with this. Thank you.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think we also need to stay focused on what it is we're doing now, and it's actually a motion to table the item to our special meeting, it's no longer an effort to arbitrarily pull a posted item off of an agenda. So, that said, once that motion and second was made, to put the item up for consideration, and a subsequent motion to table happened, that's a natural order process, that certainly is commonplace. So, you know, if we want to fight about whether or not it's okay for the mayor to remove an item or not, I think we solve that with the motion to table. So, we just have to focus on that, and, you know, hopefully, we have a special session next week. I think that everyone associated with the project, including our staff and the principals, should plan to be there with answers, and then we will have our closed session with our staff, and our outside council, but if we have questions, you know, for the developers, or for the project owners, I think that we should also have them in tow, so that all of the information can be presented, so that when we come out the other side of that meeting, we're prepared to make a choice. So, I think we'll, we'll be better for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder McElhany.
I just want to respond about, some comments about that this, that the public is, is awaiting this discussion and decision. The public that I represent wants me to get all the answers that I need, to make a good decision, a good decision financially, a good decision for the city. When I tell them I don't have those answers, they will fully expect me to do whatever I had to do, to find out those answers, and that's what I'm doing. So, I, I feel that this is actually showing the council doing better work, in saying, we're not really sure, we, everyone here has all their questions answered, so why are we trying to push a vote? We need to, everybody should be able to get their questions answered before a big vote, before any vote, and this has been a very hard process for me, because I, I'm having a hard time finding answers. There's, you know, there was a presentation that didn't give a lot of answers, we know other things are happening with the remediation, and somebody's pulling off somebody, so this needs to be tabled, until we can get those answers, because I am not at all able to vote, I'm not able to vote in a, in a manner that I feel confident, and so that is why I will be voting to table this, and I'm hoping, if that fails, I am putting everyone on notice, I will be voting no, because I don't have the answers to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hopefully, when Alder McElhany does get those answers, I hope she will still vote no on this. The public that I represent thinks that this has devolved into kind of an opaque mess, kind of typical and representative of the messes that have been seen at City Hall in the past, and I think that, in terms of getting more information out, we should take information, all that we have, and any information that does not meet the kind of legal definition of confidential, we should not be placing council members under that type of gag, and we should be readily releasing all information the city has about this process, and the delay, as long as it is not considered privileged, or confidential, by the technical legal definition. And, you know, I've kind of heard the term "fighting" tonight, and what I've heard is a very civil, civil discussion and debate on this, so I think it's generally productive to discuss things of importance, so I don't think this has devolved into anything untoward. But in terms of being characterized as kind of the natural process, in order of things, I do not think it's the case to put something of this type of substance and controversy on an agenda, and as Alder Denny mentioned, having citizens prepared to watch, and potentially participate, and having it pulled at the last minute, and I'm, I'm quite concerned of what I'm hearing, that we're involved in a $10.8 million subsidized project with taxpayer dollars, and we get to the day of an important decision, and members of the body are saying they don't really know what's going on. So, I think that's probably a red flag, and indication that perhaps we need to really look at, why don't members who are voting on almost $11 million subsidized projects, and who had voted on them before, why do they get to the day of a vote, and quote, "not know what's going on"? So, yes, I'm all for support of the pursuit of information, but I think, even if this does not proceed tonight, it's been productive in highlighting that I think there are things we need to improve, and that's obviously making sure that members of the body, and members of the public have all the relevant information far in advance, so we don't end up pulling important items on an agenda off at, at the last minute. Thank you.
I'll, oh, I was gonna say, we're not, we're not pulling it off now, they're voting to table it, and that's a appropriate, I mean, a typical motion that's made, we've done that many times over the years, whether the public's expecting to hear it or not, that's really up to the body, to decide by majority, whether or not you're gonna postpone an item, so that's not a violation of the open meeting law.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson, if I may respond to that comment, at no time did I suggest it was a violation of the open meetings law, and I would agree that tabling is not out of the ordinary, but pulling an item, bringing it back, and then tabling it, probably is. Thank you.
Alder Denny.
Point of order.
Oh, we got a point. What is your point of order?
I believe Alder Denny already had his two times to speak.
So, we're talking about the, the motion to table, and according to my document, this is time two.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes? Okay, thank you.
You're recognized.
And I, you know, I, I agree, tabling is a normal course of action, and I think it's the appropriate action, if, if that's what we've determined, and we've heard some, some very troubled questions not being answered. So, that, that, I think, is the, is the appropriate to handle it, and I'm glad we did put it out here for a discussion, at least to this point. So, i- in addition to some of the legal questions that may be needed to be answered, there should be a process, then, where we can, we can input some of our questions, like, for example, I want to know what the draw has been on this project, month by month, and what is going to be, moving forward, month by month, by the city, because the city has, has expended money on this, so let's...
Point of order.
Yeah, okay.
We are, we're talking about tabling this item, we're not talking about finances, and stuff like that.
I would invite you, if you have questions, feel free to email Anne, me, Liz, all of us. Is there any further discussion on the motion to table? All righty, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting.
We will talk about this at our next special meeting, which we are scheduling, in theory, for next Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, that will be posted, and if you have questions that you'd like answered by either the internal team, or the external teams, definitely feel free to send them our way. All righty, we are moving on to file number 230820. This is a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the proposed Axon Contract for Public Safety Software Suite of Services, including body worn and in-squad cameras, tasers, interview room, and recording, and digital evidence management and storage related to budget impacts. Looks like I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen, and a second by Alder Denny. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right, thank you. Next up is file number 230821, it's another resolution from the Finance Committee approving the acceptance of Public Health Vending Machine Program, for $80,000 for the purchase of two outdoor health vending machines, setup, maintenance, and supplies. I have a motion by Alder Lukens, and a second by Alder Rasmussen. Before I acknowledge the council members, it looks like our finance director has something to say.
Sure, we will be bringing back a budget mod, so that this grant is incorporated into the budget. Unfortunately, I was out of the office last week, so we weren't able to add that.
So, we'll talk about it a couple times. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a constituent call me, and she is sternly against this, but, so I, I kind of have some questions, um, where are these two machines going to be placed, and, I mean, I, I have...
I'm looking to the back, where I believe our expert is, Captain Pauls. Hi there.
Hi. So, we've worked with some of our community partners, the two machines would be outdoor machines, placed at the community campus on Grand Avenue, and then Health First on South Third Ave.
What one?
Health First on South Third Avenue.
Okay. I guess, my, my concerns are, you know, are for vandalism, and people abusing these, and, pardon me, says I want to, I'd like to see this, because if it saves one life, it's worth it. You know, but then again, I, I don't want to see this, where, where it can be abused, where an addict can say, well, you know what, I'm gonna go get this drug out of this machine, and then I'm gonna go get a buzz, and if I get two buzz, I'm gonna shoot, I'm gonna take my free drug, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to see it put in a position where it can be abused, I, I would like to see it placed, some kind of, I don't know if the program's the right word to use, but some kind of authority, or supervision, to where this type of thing cannot be abused, if that makes any sense.
I understand your concerns, one of the things that we did look at is where we could place these. We currently have many opportunities for people to receive Narcan, which is one of the primary reasons for having these public health vending machines, currently in the city already. The barriers are, those aren't 24-hour, you know, areas that they can receive Narcan. So, what these would do is make these fentanyl test strips, Narcan, means of saving lives, like you said, available 24 hours a day. So, that's, one of the things that we looked at, is public areas where they're easily accessible. These have been around for decades, in other countries, other cities, even within the states here, they're finding very little vandalism of the machines. Again, they are placing some, in some communities, in public areas, and really not having any issues with those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I highly support this, and will be voting for it, and I was pleased to hear that there may be fentanyl test strips invol, is that correct, available from these machines?
That is correct. One of the things that we recognize is, the drugs are in our community already, these are the means to keep people safe.
Yes, I couldn't agree more, and I talked with the chief and deputy chief about getting fentanyl test strips out to the public, probably about a year or two ago, and we had just had a discussion about that, so I'm very pleased to see that's going to be included here, and yes, I think, you know, we talk about the, the phrase "save lives", and I think that's exactly what this will do, and probably more than one. So, I think rarely, I think, do we sit around the table here, and have the ability to place a vote, that's literally, almost certainly going to save Wausonians' lives, so I, I very much support this, and I would be concerned about putting these in any, any place that's highly scrutinized, or surveilled, as, has been talked about, because I think citizens need to feel comfortable, when these are needed, to go there, and, and feel like they're, they're not being watched by Big Brother, per se, I'm, I'm sure there'll be some monitoring to make sure the, the system works well and safely, but I think people need to feel like they've got unfettered access to these tools, and I hope then, moving forward, we can talk about a needle exchange program in Wausau, not just on the outskirts, and maybe that's happened already, it hadn't happened a year or two ago, but not only will I think that will support the health of our citizens, it will also help reduce the needles we find thrown around every year after the snow melts, so thank you for making this a reality, and I will, it's got my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not seeing any more questions. Thank you, Captain Pauls.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting.
Motion passes 9-1.
All righty. Next up, we have a request to suspend the rules, 6B for filing, this does require a two-third vote. I have a motion by Alder Lukens, and a second by Alder Watson, we don't get to discuss this one, so I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. All right, so we are now on to file number 230108A, a resolution from the Public Health and Safety Committee, approving or denying various licenses as indicated. I'm understanding that this was a unanimous vote, at Public Health and Safety earlier today. I have a motion by Alder Watson, and a second by Alder Rasmussen. Is there any comment? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 221109A, it's a resolution from the Finance Committee, approving the city's accepted offer to purchase for 1514 North Second Street, and related budget modification. I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen, and a second by Alder Watson, this was also unanimous. Alder Gisselman.
Yes, thank you. I have some questions. Was this agreed upon by the seller? How did the city come to, you know, come into negotiations, and, and then also, perhaps, what's the plan? You know, we've been acquiring land, block by block, sometimes lot by lot, so what does this do for the city of Wausau? So, we're spending a lot of money here, for some property, which we have in the neighborhood. What's the, I specifically want to know about the, the seller, how we came to, how we came to purchase it.
Looks like we have Randy here, ready to answer.
Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity. We were contacted by the seller's agent, they're just putting the house on the market, knowing that we have seven adjacent city-owned lots, they reached out to us to see if we were interested. First day they put it on the market, we took a tour of it, put together an offer to purchase, worked with the Joint Economic Development and Finance Committees to bring that to them, we had a closed session, would have been exactly a week ago, talked about our purchase price, which was the asking price, that the seller had put out there. The house is currently vacant at this point, they had been renting it out, but the renter had moved into their own home, so it's been sitting vacant for, I think, approximately three months at this point. As was mentioned, we've got seven adjoining lots that are city-owned, we were actually talking about the... We were actually talking about this area last year, about potentially putting out an RFP for development. We ended up choosing to go with the 700-grand ab site to RFP at that point, so this will be kind of in our vision plans for next year. Obviously, gonna keep an eye on what the economy says and what different things are looking like at that on the development front, but the idea is that we'll be looking at doing an RFP for all these properties at some point in the next year or two.
So, just carrying on with that thought, that would be the properties then between Bridge and DeKalb on Second Street, not the lots to the south of DeKalb are not really, would be within your plan, or is it pretty much the, when you say that you're gonna be reaching out for development plans, I just want to know, because there's talk about the area south of DeKalb, I'm just curious as to where we are planning to go with that development plan next year.
And one of the things that, and I'll kind of answer your question in a roundabout way, is that, you know, what we're talking about with this development, really, what needs to go, there is really doing something similar to what we did on Thomas Street and involving the neighborhood as part of that discussion. Really, what we've been focusing on is that section of city-owned properties between Bridge and DeKalb. There is one further on the corner there, just south of there, but that's really, wouldn't necessarily fit into our overall plan. We may include that as in the RFP, if somebody's looking to do a single-family home on that, but...
But basically, the lots between DeKalb and Bridge Street?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I actually support this purchase and the acquisition. I had questions about it myself, when we talked about it, though, in the joint meeting. This property is actually strategically located. If you look at it on the map, it's a property that's essentially between Second and Third on Bridge, basically. We, a number of years ago, were developing, I think what we called at the time, the near-north master plan, looking at the north half of downtown that heads toward Bridge Street, and there was a vision for that area that included that property, and at one point, I think there was even looking into acquiring that home back then, and at that point, it was tenant-occupied, and the seller wanted a huge, huge price for it, and we backed away. So, that was a couple of community development directors ago, but that property has always been, you know, kind of eyed for, to be part of that near-north master plan, and, you know, to develop that site in that corner, and that really is just west of the site where we had debated recently, the billboard and its presence there. So, if there's a project that could encompass a number of those properties and then dovetail with what we've already created there, near the Blenker Townhomes, I think we could really have a nice development if we get the proper proposal, so, and the price seemed reasonable on this one. It wasn't in fantastic shape when they took the tour, but I think whatever comes there later will be, so hopefully, we'll all support this.
Thank you. Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor, and I supported this as well. I guess one of my concerns was that we weren't displacing somebody currently living there, and, you know, we talked about possibly turning it over to the Fire Department, where they could do some training and maybe control burn this thing down, but if this is going to be a long-term scenario, is there a possibility that this could be put under Tammy Stratt's control for affordable housing at some point, if we're gonna be a year, two, or three down the road before we do raise the building?
From touring the building, I think raising it and looking for a new development in that area is our best path forward. I'll leave it at that.
I'm not seeing any further questions or comments, so I think we are ready to vote on this one.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 9-1.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 230819. It's a resolution from the Human Resources Committee approving ATU Local 1168 Union Grievance Arbitration Settlement. I have a motion by Alder Herbst and a second by Alder Lukens. Is there, oh, I am told this was also unanimous, so if there are any comments? Not seeing any. I think we're ready to go ahead and just vote on this one.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10-0.
All right. Last up, public comment and suggestions. If you didn't get it out before, you can get it out now. Anyone? All righty, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Herbst and a second by Watson. All in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.